Can WebEx hear me? Somebody thumbs up? Okay. If you could join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Now, Amy, would you like to thank all those people who have put in way too many hours to make this work?
I'd be glad to. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, everyone on Town Meeting. I do want to take another moment to remind you of all the people that are involved with running this meeting, starting with the schools, John Middleton, and then the AV team from the high school, which is this evening is Ashley Lavoy, Joe Mercado, and Casper McKinnick. And then the IT team from the town, which includes Jose Souza, Jim Round, Casey Silva, Linda Belavilla, and Joe Borgiorno. And then my staff as well, Linda McNeil, who is here tonight in the room, Kate O'Shea, who's helping me with the slides and everything, and Kristen Migley, who is working from home for anyone who is on WebEx who needed help getting on. Thank you, too, for the people of WebEx for your patience tonight as we onboarded you. And then also for BCAT, Jen Dodge, Chris Flaherty, and Rich Hofsfried will be working tonight. So it does take a whole team to be able to get a hybrid meeting going, and I appreciate that. And I would like you to recognize them as well. They'll work on it.
Thank you, Amy. Before we get going, there's one issue I need to take care of here. The Rules Committee has suggested that we change our meeting time from to start at 7:00 instead of 7:30. I didn't want to make that unilateral decision without your input. So I guess I'd like some input from Town Meeting. I guess I'll just ask all those who are in favor of changing to 7:00. Please raise your hand. Did you just ask WebEx? Oh. Put your hands down. Okay, we have a, I guess it's wrapped in with our housekeeping motion. The moderator would consider a motion to allow us to conduct a hybrid meeting with in-person attendees voting by raising their hand in, excuse me, by in-person attendees voting by raising their hand and virtual attendees joining with the town's WebEx platform, utilize the WebEx platform's polling function to vote, name Bruce Maury as deputy moderator, and adjourn to 7:00 on May 11, 2022. Do I have a second? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? I guess we'll consider this our practice online voting question. There's a clear majority in favor, so that passes. Let's go through a few things on our meeting protocol, just so to catch everybody up on how to do it. I know we have a number of new members here. For those who are on WebEx, in order to speak at the meeting, to be recognized by the moderator, you need to raise your virtual hand. So click the button that raises your hand, and I get a list of whose hands are raised, and then I can recognize you. After you've been recognized, there's a couple things. First, put your hand down. And second, take a second before you say anything. We're switching back and forth between microphones and sound systems, et cetera. So give us a second to make sure we get the switch made before you start talking. First thing is to state your name and precinct number, and then go about your business. And when you're done, mute yourself. In a minute. For those of you who are here in person, it's a little easier. You just raise your hand and wait till I recognize you. And again, state your name and precinct. And if you have a mute button when you're through finished, I'd probably appreciate that, too. And to vote, while WebEx people have already had their opportunity, Amy will send out a poll. Choose your response promptly and submit. After we get the poll results in, I will have observed what the body in person says, and I will state the result. If anyone has questions or if things are tight and it didn't look obvious, you can question it and we can have a count. And now Amy has to swear some people in. If you would, Amy, please.
So all of you who are newly elected or are brand-new Town Meeting members, if you will stand. And those of you who are on WebEx, if you will raise your hand. And repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon me as a Town Meeting member for precinct according to the rules of the town and the laws of the Commonwealth. Congratulations.
Okay, let's move on to the first article, Reports of Town Officers and Committees. Mr. Parker, I believe you have a short comment to give us about from the Transportation Committee?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It would be really brief here. My name is Rick Parker. I have sat with me here for the last six years, a Town Meeting member. I am now the Chair of Transportation Committee, which is under the purview of the Select Board. The committee was formed as a means to continue the work that the Town Meeting's Transportation Committee had started and passed on. We have moved those items forward. The committee has representatives from the planning department, the school department, council agent, the residential community, the business community, and Nick Priest from the Select Board keeps us in line. We continue to assess the population's specific needs. We've done this discreetly over around the last eight months, looking at seniors, students, and daytime population and needs. Recommendation from a previous committee said that if you didn't have a car, it was very difficult to get around Corona, so we don't need that. And we're trying to get out with the one-person-one-car routines. So we have taken inventory of all public transit to and from Burlington. We've reengaged safe routes to school with the school committee. We're investigating sources of grant funding. We're looking into microtransit and how it's being performed in other communities, as well as regional transit partnerships. We will have recommendations to the Select Board in late fall to prioritize and outline the next steps. Our meetings are held on the first Wednesday each month via WebEx, so if you want to participate or have any questions, feel free to join us. I appreciate you continuing to do the town's business and I hope you get out of here early in the next couple of months.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. And now we will have a presentation on our financial situation. Mr. Sagrino, Mr. Dincio, one of you? Yeah. Excuse me.
The purpose of this report is to provide you with an overview of your budget article representing the foundation of the This chart represents a budget process of starts and is starting at a low level for a long time. We typically begin the fall by developing guidelines. We have come to a budget on joint discussion with the Select Board, School Committee, Ways and Means, as well as the School and Town Administration. Once we have general reading of the guidelines, the parties prepare the budget proposals for approval by the Budget Committee, whether that be the School Committee, Select Board, Recreation Commission, or other elected board. The budget plan is based on a review by Ways and Means subsidies prior to a year you didn't vote on and by the Ways and Means amazes. The Ways and Means vote represent a budget that are being presented to the citizens, which puts us at about 5.5% of our tax drive. From here, the budget process continues into the fall of the process of setting the tax rate. The fiscal year 2023 guidelines then voted for 3.5% for the town operating businesses, 27.5% for school operating businesses. And for our sharing expenses are accommodated in terms, we had hoped to fall within the range of 5.5% to 7.5%. We were successful in closing those green 20 guidelines on the fiscal year 2023. We originally estimated to get back to this by this month, but we hold the same plan, slightly slower than I expected, which is very, very sorry for the fiscal year 2022 budget process. However, we are cautiously optimistic about the good news from the states in the last eight days that has allowed to update our standard impacts of the tax limits by across about 3.74%. Next, we have a couple of side charts that represent the sources of funding for the budget, as well as a summary of percentages. As you can see on the revenue chart, our budget was primarily funded for property taxes, with 49% for our commercial taxes, and 30% for resident taxes, with lesser amounts provided by local and state receipts. On the expense side, great times daily typical for Massachusetts is that of the education, general government, and shared taxes. Now, I would like to read three main categories of revenue purposes for the month's budget. As we speak earlier, we are reviewing the guidelines. We started off with a budget where we anticipated the tax limits might be slightly lower of 5% as had been typical in the past seven years. We have been reviewing all the data, spending across from 3.77% to some unexpected increases to our seasonal loss, in particular, the check to Chevy's application fee. We are cautiously optimistic that these numbers will hold up, but as of yet, the same budget does not yet meet our targets. Next up is the tax limits. Showed is the tax limit increases in corresponding plans on the average annual payment tax debt of the past seven years. As you can see, with the initiative of the state, we were able to go with the tax limits from the anticipated 0.9% to 3.77%. We won't build the exact same tax on the average annual payment tax debt, which is well over 4.7%. As we start to look back at the state's and the rest of the states, fiscal year 2022, our residential rate was 9.5% with 43% of standard spending in this balance sheet. And our commercial rate was 26.4%, which is a higher mark, but still very competitive in comparison to both communities in the region that we pay for business investments. This slide demonstrates what we're looking at in terms of our financial situation, which I believe of the total property value in the house, 66% is residential and 30% is commercial. However, this relationship is completely closed, so we're talking about actual tax dollars that are letting as commercial tax, as being 66% of the tax dollars, and 37% is straight up by other commercial payers. As a point of reference, the average tax limit in the state is 32% to residential payers and 32% to commercial payers. Our next slide illustrates some trends in mobile receipts. Mobile receipts actually have traditional preferences that are creating penalties in the town, such as the mortgage, the less size, building permits, and social services. As you can see, we've made a major impact in 2021 due to the pandemic, it's been fact, a lot of economy. And for 2022 and 23, we have realized $5,000 in harmful funding to replace the lost revenue return to the budget goal. And happy to report that our local economy has been quite resilient from these tariffs, but I'm talking about the other key concerns, in particular, our hotels.
May I have a question from Mr. Moderator?
It says, "The tax of town, so I could have asked some questions." Fourth, we did go on an update meeting as to where we are in terms of our financial reserves. Free cash is certified, and we will be proposing free cash as funding for
We're going to try to do it again.
With a charge from capital budget and other one-time expenditures that can vary. This is the line that says, "Practice," that free cash non-influence for all the owners. Our stable savings line is a rate gate, as well as non-influence. And our excess capacity is above 340,000. Excess capacity is how much you can afford to increase your taxation.
Mr. Moderator?
We're trying to fix it. We'll do it again.
Can you silence, please, because we cannot hear and understand what is being said?
We're trying to fix it, and we'll do it again.
That's fine. Could you pause it?
It's paused.
Thank you.
Everybody, take five-minute break. We're trying to fix a problem here. Now, I know none of you want to miss an iota of this presentation, so we will start at scratch, from scratch, all over again.
Make sure that the little microphone next to your name is turned to red. Thank you.
Thank you.
We've had another little glitch. I guess WebEx isn't getting great sound. So we will have Mr. Sagarino go through a slide, essentially the slideshow presentation, speaking in person.
(applause)
In 3.75% on the school, we had a goal of keeping the tax levy increase under 5%. And we had hoped that shared accounts would fall between 5.25% and 5.75%. We are happy to report that we did meet those guidelines. And this budget that's presented to you tonight does meet the town guidelines as set up. Next slide, please, Amy. The next slide just basically shows a summary of the budget by revenue source and also by expenditure. On the revenue side, you can see that the largest amount of funding for our budget comes from property taxes, with 49% of the budget funded through commercial property taxes, 30% from residential taxpayers, and smaller amounts from state and local revenue sources. On the expenditure pie chart, you can see what I would call a very typical breakdown in expenditures for a Massachusetts municipality between education spending, general government spending, and shared accounts. Next slide, please, Amy. Next, we'll get into a little bit of detail on the main revenue categories. Next slide, please. The first one we want to look at is state aid. As you can see, the history over the past several years, state aid does not cover a large part of the town's budget. It's actually a very small percentage of our revenue. But we are cautiously optimistic that since we set the budget guidelines, we've received some good news from the state in terms of our local education, Chapter 70 funding. And as of today, those numbers stand up, but the state budget has not yet been approved. So we're cautiously optimistic that we will receive that funding. And as we move forward, we'll show you, you know, what the benefit of that is. Next slide, please. This slide demonstrates the past several years of what we call the tax levy increase, which is the total amount of taxes that we levy as a community. We had during the guidelines, anticipated and had a goal of a tax levy increase of less than 5%. But due to that influx of state aid, we were able to estimate a tax levy increase of 3.74%. You can also see on the bottom half of the chart what those tax levy increases correlated to in terms of the percentage increase on the average single-family tax bill. As we stated earlier, the tax rate's not set to the fall, so we do not know what the impact of this year's budget will be on the single-family tax percentage. But you can get a general sense of what previous years have led to in terms of impact on single-family tax bills. Next slide, please, Amy. Some of the statistics on our taxes. Our, for fiscal year 2022, which was last fiscal year, our residential tax rate was 43rd out of the 351 municipalities in Massachusetts. And our commercial tax rate, 2664, was certainly on the higher end, but still very competitive with neighboring communities that we compete for businesses with. And just as a, as a point of note, not all communities have a split tax rate, which is a different tax rate for residents and businesses. So in many communities that don't have a commercial sector, it's one tax rate for all residents in all businesses. Next slide, please. This is really, slide is intended to demonstrate how unique our budget here is in Burlington. So the total value of all the property in town is comprised of 38% commercial property and 62% residential property. But as we look at the actual tax dollars levied, by splitting the tax rate, we're able to get, commercial taxpayers paying 63% of the total tax levy and 37% of residential taxes. You can see that that's the exact opposite. The relationship flips between value and actual tax dollars. And just as a point of reference, in the state, the average tax levy is made up of 82% residential taxes and 18% commercial. So you can see, in our case, it's only 37% residential. So that's a really great deal for the residents. Next slide, please. The next category of revenue that we use to fund our budget is local receipts. You know, this would be your categories such as motor vehicle excise, building permits, hotels tax, meals tax, and a variety of other revenue sources that the town collects. You can see we made a rather large adjustment to our local receipts several years ago for the pandemic. And we're happy to report that the local economy has been very resilient. We do still have areas of concern, but the local economy has held up pretty well. And just as a point of note, that we are using approximately $500,000 of ARPA funding for three years in order to keep the budget whole. Next slide, please, Amy. Financial indicators. This is something we always want to talk about as we head into town meeting. It's sort of an assessment of where we stand financially, sort of in terms of money in the bank. Our free cash was certified at $18 million. You will see no free cash utilized in terms of balance in the operating budget, only on one-time expenditures in capital warrant articles. That's a best practice by the state. We don't want to use, we want to use recurring revenue to fund the budget. Free cash is not considered recurring revenue, so we want to use non-recurring revenue for non-recurring expenditures, which we've done here in this budget. The town's rainy day fund, stabilization fund, is set at $10 million. That's a two-thirds vote to access. And our excess levy capacity is the amount of dollars that we could assess in taxes without a proposition two and a half override. So we can access those dollars without spending. It does impact all taxpayers, but it is a great reserve for the town to have in an emergency. And we work really hard to try to manage that. Excess capacity is not something that many communities have a lot of flexibility with that. So we're, again, it's another, one of the things that makes our community unique as it relates to the budget. Next slide, please. Budget goals are fairly typical for what we strive for in this community. We strive to maintain services. We want to minimize fees for services. We like to prioritize our investment in infrastructure. As we're all aware, we have a lot of big projects to do over the next few years. And, you know, by investing in our infrastructure, we're actually setting the town up, setting up future generations for the town to be stable. We typically want to try to adjust any plans for our long-term liabilities. You hear us talk about OPEB and pension liabilities specifically. And we try to make adjustments to those plans so that we're properly accounting for our liabilities going forward. And the last one at the bottom there, we always want to have a plan for backing off the use of reserves. As I mentioned previously, we've been using $500,000 of federal money to balance this budget out. And we do have a plan to wean ourselves off of that revenue source. So we'll go back to a 100% sustainable budget within a year or two. Next slide, please. Okay, fiscal '23, concerns and considerations. We still, I did mention to you that local receipts and the local economy has been very resilient, but we do have some serious concerns, particularly as relates to the town's hotels. Hotel tax is down almost 50% since the pre-pandemic, and it's about a couple million dollars. So that's a, the status of our hotels is a real concern as we move forward. Restaurants seem to be coming back pretty well. We've had some rather large building permits over the past year as well. So we're very hopeful the local, the local economy is responding well after the pandemic as well as possible. One of the other things that we had sort of on our plate, if you can just go back to that, Amy, I'm sorry. We had on our plate, and it's something we worked to address prior to the pandemic, is sort of the change in office space. We do have a lot of office space in town. And even prior to the pandemic, we were very much concerned about changing tastes in office space with people working from home, what would happen. We, through our Economic Development Office, we work with commercial landlords on a fairly regular basis. We have high qual, they report to us that we have high-quality tenants in town that have been paying their leases through the pandemic. What they do caution us on is that what we may see is as we move forward and leases expire in the next few years, you know, what do companies do then? Do they lease less space? Do they lease no space? So that's something we're keeping a close eye on as we move forward. And lastly, and I know that this has been on everybody's mind, we want to be very thoughtful about how we manage debt service. I think we all know that we have a lot of big-ticket items that we want to get taken care of in the next several years. So we want to make sure that we do that thoughtfully and carefully. If we take on too much debt too soon, it's going to have a drastic impact on the funding available for services and operating budgets. So we have, you know, an elementary school, a police station, a high school project as well. I do believe that we can afford all these things over time. We just want to be careful and thoughtful about bringing on debt too soon. Once we, once we take on the debt, we don't have any flexibility. It's like your mortgage. If you don't pay, you're in, we're in serious trouble. So we, again, we do, we're very positive about doing those projects over the next 10 years. the next ten years, but I just think that we just need to be very cautious as we move forward there. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sagarino. Mr. Moran, would you like to s, say a few words about, uh, what Ways and Means has to say about our finances?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Steve Moran, Chair, Ways and Means, Town Meeting Member from Precinct Three. In front of you, in front of you tonight is the, um, FY twenty-three budget that's been thoroughly reviewed by the Ways and Means Committee. As Paul mentioned, we sat down with way, uh, the department heads, aren't, sorry, the, um, Select Board, the School Committee, the, uh, supervisory bodies in Ways and Means, and we set aside the guidelines that we wanted for this year. Um, and then when the towns came back with the budgets, the subcommittees, the various subcommittees of the Ways and Means, we have five subcommittees, met thoroughly with each of the department heads and departments and went over their, uh, budgets with a fine-tooth comb. This year, we instituted a new process of, uh, capturing a new FTE form, which goes into great detail as to not just the, the, the needs of the new position, but specifically what that position does, why it's warranted, and it gives us a way of comparing new FTE requests, uh, from the various departments. So we started meeting, uh, in earnest in the beginning of March, and, uh, in fact, we're still, I have a couple more warrant articles that we need to cover on Wednesday night. But we're, uh, happy to, uh, present this budget to you. Uh, the committee does a ton of hard work on this. In addition, we also thoroughly go through the warrant articles. Um, the town administration, Ways and Means, and the sub, Town Hall One Subcommittee go through and monitor the use of our free cash, our stabilization, set goals, and figure out what the appropriate levels of those, uh, should be, and also how to do, uh, the pay-as-you-go capital plan and, uh, putting aside some money so that way we, we keep it off the bond schedule. So finally, um, we come to this, uh, I'd like to, uh, thank Tom Kilalea for his at least thirteen-plus years of being on Ways and Means. This year, he retired, and so we're, we're very much going to miss him. So thank you to that. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Moran. Okay. Now I think we'll move on to Article Three. Article Two has been withdrawn. Article Three is to fund the FY twenty twenty-three operating budget. It's been moved and seconded by Ways and Means Committee to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds, borrow or otherwise provide a sum of one hundred fifty-nine million, four hundred forty-four thousand, three hundred twenty-five dollars, sufficient to cover the requests of the various departments for FY twenty twenty-three or to act in any other manner in relation thereto. As has been our practice, um, we will go through each, I, I will read off each, uh, department budget individually, uh, along with the, the votes of the, uh, Selectmen in Ways and Means or School Committee in Ways and Means. Um, and, um, along with the, the percent increase, if anyone wishes to hold that particular budget, uh, please say, "Hold," and, and we'll put that one aside and, uh, discuss it individually. Uh, any questions on that? Okay, let's start going down through the list. Town meeting and reports, fifteen thousand, nine hundred eight dollars, zero percent increase. Ways and Means voted eleven zero zero. Select Board, five zero zero. Ways and Means Reserve Fund, two hundred thousand dollars. Percent change, minus thirty-three percent. Ways and Means vote, fourteen zero zero. Selectmen, five zero zero. Legislative Committees, eleven thousand, seventeen dollars. Percent change, plus thirty-seven point four-two percent. Ways and Means vote, eleven zero zero. Select Board took no vote on this. Select Board, Town Administration Budget, eight hundred twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred ninety-nine dollars. Increase of nine point six-five percent. Ways and Means voted twelve zero zero. School Board, Select Board voted five zero zero. Town Accountant, four hundred forty-four thousand dollars, excuse me, four hundred forty-four thousand and sixty dollars, minus five point nine-five percent change. Ways and Means voted twelve zero zero. Select Board voted five zero zero. Assessors, four hundred sixty-two thousand, eight hundred thirty-seven dollars. Percent change, two point eight-three percent. Ways and Means voted twelve zero zero. Um, Mr. Noonan, your hand is up. Do you have a question, or did you want to hold something? All right. Kristen Murphy-Curry, you have your hand up. Do you have a question? Thank you. Yes, Mr. Clerk. Hold what? Yes? Okay, let's continue. Treasure Collector, six hundred ninety-five thousand, seven hundred twenty-one dollars, an increase of one point nine-two percent. Ways and Means voted fourteen zero zero. Select Board voted five zero zero. Central Administration, one hundred thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred twenty dollars. Percent increase, one percent. Ways and Means voted fourteen zero zero. Select Board, five zero zero. Chapter Three Twenty, Chapter Thirty-two B, excuse me, yeah, gee, there we go. Chapter Thirty-two B Employee Benefits, fifteen million, six hundred thirty-three thousand, fifty-four dollars. An increase of four point oh-two percent. Ways and Means voted fourteen zero zero. Select Board voted five zero zero. Other Post-Employment Benefits, nine hundred thirty-one thousand, seven hundred seventy-five dollars. Percent increase, nine point four percent. Ways and Means vote fourteen zero zero. Select Board vote, five zero zero. Unemployment, one hundred thousand dollars. No change from last year. Ways and Means vote fourteen zero zero. Select Board voted five zero zero. Town Insurance and Workers' Comp, one million, two hundred fourteen thousand, two hundred nineteen dollars. Five percent increase. Ways and Means voted fourteen zero zero. Select Board voted five zero zero. Financial Services Audit, sixty thousand. No change. Fourteen zero zero. Ways and Means vote. Select Board voted five zero zero. Medicare, one million, three hundred twenty-three thousand, one hundred thirty-four dollars. Five percent increase. Ways and Means voted fourteen zero zero. Select Board, five zero zero. Legal Budget, two hundred two thousand dollars. Percent increase, zero. Ways and Means voted twelve zero zero. Select Board voted five zero zero. Human Resources, one hundred sixty-five thousand, three hundred thirty-seven dollars. Zero point seven-six percent increase. Thirteen zero zero. Ways and Means vote, five zero zero. Select Board vote. MIS, seven hundred forty thousand, five hundred thirty-three dollars. Nine point nine-seven percent increase. Ways and Means voted twelve zero zero. Select Board voted five zero zero. Human Resources, one hundred sixty-five thousand, three hundred thirty-seven dollars. Percent increase of zero point seven-six. Ways and Means vote, thirteen zero zero. Select Board, five zero zero. Is that just human resources? Okay. MIS, seven hundred forty thousand, five, did I, did I do this one already? I'm sorry. Lost, lost my place. Clerk, here we go. Four hundred ninety-three thousand, two hundred sixty-five dollars. An increase of nineteen point seven-seven percent. Ways and Means voted fourteen zero zero. Board of Registars, thirteen thousand, one hundred fifty dollars. Increase of nine point one-three percent. Ways and Means supported this fourteen zero zero. No. Conservation, two hundred eighty-two thousand, three hundred sixty-two thousand vote, excuse me, let me try that again. Two hundred eighty-two thousand, three hundred sixty-two thousand, excuse me, three hundred eighty-two thousand, three hundred sixty-two dollars. There we go. Two point one-three percent increase. Ways and Means voted twelve zero one. Select Board supported it five zero zero. Planning Department, four hundred forty-four thousand, two hundred twenty-six dollars. Percent increase of eighteen point seven-two percent. Ways and Means vote was six, in favor, five opposed, one abstention. Board of Appeals, thirteen thousand, seven hundred thirty-one dollars. No change from last year. Ways and Means voted support this fourteen zero zero. No vote from the Board of, the Select Board. Town Facilities, ninety-eight thousand, one hundred sixty-three dollars. Percent increase of two point three-one percent. Ways and Means vote, eleven zero zero. Select Board vote, five zero zero. Police Department, nine million, seven hundred twenty-three thousand, seven hundred ninety-five dollars. An increase of zero point eight-four percent. Ways and Means voted twelve zero zero. Select Board voted five zero zero. Fire, nine million, two hundred three thousand, twenty-three dollars. An increase of one point eight-nine percent. Ways and Means voted twelve zero zero. Select Board voted five zero zero. Building Department, six hundred eighty-seven thousand, one hundred ninety-eight dollars. A change of, uh, negative twelve point one-two percent. Ways and Means voted thirteen zero zero. Select Board voted five zero zero. Seal of Waits and Measures, seven thousand, eight hundred dollars. Zero ch, percent change. Ways and Means voted thirteen zero zero. Select Board voted five zero zero. Emergency Management, twenty-three thousand, six hundred dollars. Zero percent change. Ways and Means voted twelve zero zero. Select Board voted five zero zero. Local Education, fifty-nine million, five hundred thirty-nine thousand, one hundred twenty-seven dollars. An increase of three point seven-five percent. Ways and Means voted thirteen zero zero. School Committee voted five zero, zero on this article. Special Education, twelve million, eight hundred seventy-three thousand, seven hundred ninety-nine dollars. An increase of four point three-eight percent. Ways and Means supported this thirteen zero zero. School Committee voted five zero zero in favor. Shawshank Assessment, two million, six hundred sixty-seven thousand, two hundred fourteen dollars. An increase of two point eight-six percent. Ways and Means supported this thirteen zero zero. Essex Assessment, one hundred six thousand, eight hundred sixty-five dollars. A decrease of thirteen point three-five percent. Ways and Means voted twelve zero zero in favor. Minutemen, twenty-six thousand, three hundred fourteen dollars. A decrease of seventy-seven point four-five percent. Ways and Means supported this twelve zero zero. Public Works, ten million, one hundred ninety-seven thousand, eighty dollars. An increase of two point one percent. Ways and Means supported this fourteen zero zero. Select Board, five zero zero. Trash Removal, two million, three hundred twenty-two thousand, one hundred twenty-four dollars. An increase of three point four-seven percent. Ways and Means supported this fourteen zero zero. Select Board voted five zero zero in favor. Streetlights, three hundred sixty thousand, five hundred dollars. A decrease of two point seven percent. Ways and Means supported this fourteen zero zero. Select Board supported this five zero zero. DEP Drinking Water Assessment, fifteen thousand dollars. Zero change from last year. Ways and Means supported this fourteen zero zero. Select Board, five zero zero. Board of Health, six hundred ninety-four thousand, eight hundred ninety-four dollars. A decrease of one point five percent. Ways and Means voted eleven zero zero in favor. Mosquito Control, forty-five thousand, seven hundred forty-three dollars. Zero percent change. Ways and Means Ways and Means supported this eleven zero zero. Hazardous Waste Collection. Fifty thousand dollars. Zero percent change. Ways and Means voted eleven zero zero. Council on Aging. Four hundred forty-four thousand, seven hundred six dollars. Ways and Means voted twelve zero one. Select Board voted it five zero zero. Veterans. Two hundred sixty-five thousand, seven hundred seventy-two dollars. An increase of two point nine seven percent. Ways and Means vote was fourteen zero zero. Select Board was voted five zero zero. Youth and Family Services. Five hundred four thousand, nine hundred forty-two dollars. An increase of one point three five percent. Ways and Means supported this fourteen zero zero. Selectmen voted four zero one on this article. Disability Access. Nine hundred sixty-five dollars. An increase of three point three two percent. Ways and Means supported this thirteen zero zero. Select Board voted five zero zero. Library. One million, seven hundred ten thousand, three dollars. An increase of two point zero five percent. Ways and Means voted eleven zero zero. Recreation. One million, nine hundred seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred eighty-three dollars. An increase of two point two seven percent. Ways and Means supported this twelve zero zero. Historical Commission. Nine thousand, six hundred twenty dollars. Decrease of zero point zero five percent. Ways and Means supported this fourteen zero zero. Select Board voted five zero zero in favor. Negotiated Settlements. Historical Commission I have down is... Is, uh... Nine thousand, six hundred twenty dollars. Mr. Sagarino.
No, thank you, Mr. Moderator. There was a change to that budget after the Budget Book was printed at a subsequent Ways and Means meeting. So, the amount was adjusted down, and that's what the moderator read to you. So, the nine six two O is the correct amount.
Thank you, Mr. Sagarino. Okay. Negotiated Settlements. Eight hundred seventy-two thousand, seven hundred fifteen dollars. An increase of six hundred twenty-one point zero three percent. Ways and Means supported this fourteen zero zero. Selectmen... Select Board voted five zero zero in favor. Debt Principal. Four million, eight hundred thirty-three thousand, one hundred forty-four dollars. An increase of ten point one eight percent. Ways and Means voted fourteen zero zero. Select Board voted five zero zero. Debt Interest. Two million, seven hundred seventy-two thousand, five hundred fifty-three dollars. An increase of sixteen percent. Ways and Means vote was fourteen zero zero. Select Board voted five zero zero. Middlesex Retirement. Twelve million, five hundred forty-three thousand, four hundred thirty-five dollars. An increase of six point six eight percent. Ways and Means supported this fourteen zero zero. Select Board voted five zero zero in favor. Local Transportation. Fifty thousand dollars. No increase. Ways and Means voted twelve zero one in favor. Select Board voted five zero zero. Capital Improvements. Four hundred thousand dollars. Zero percent increase. Ways and Means vote was twelve zero zero. Select Board voted five zero zero. Now, once we get a total for what wasn't held, we'll take a vote. Mr. Boyven. I suppose we can do that. Yes, Ms. Byer. Wait, excuse me. Planning? Planning and Fire, yes. It's okay.
Okay.
Ms. Newfeld, you have a question?
Phyllis Newfeld, Precinct Five. Could you give us a list of all of the ones that were held, please?
Board of Registars. Planning. Fire. Trash Removal. And Negotiated Settlements. Okay. For Article... What is this? Two, three? For the budgets that were not held. The total was one hundred forty-six million... One hundred... Excuse me. One forty... One hundred forty-six million, one hundred twenty-six thousand, two hundred fifty dollars. Mr. Campbell. Everything that was held, you've already heard about. Ms. O'Brien.
Ms. O'Brien, Precinct Two. Um... The members, uh... That are remote cannot hear our fellow town meeting members when they speak on the floor. So, we didn't hear what was held.
So, do you need to know which ones were held?
I had the list. Um... But, the concern is that now we won't be able to hear still what our fellow town meeting members might have to say about those budget items.
Everyone will be coming down to a mic, correct? Okay. So, again, for all those budgets that were not held, the total was one hundred forty-six thousand... Excuse me. One hundred forty-six million, one hundred twenty-six thousand, two hundred fifty dollars. Any questions on that? Seeing none? Send a poll out, please, Amy. And all those in favor? Opposed? There being a clear majority in favor? That motion passes. Now, let's go back to the individual budgets that were held. First one held was the assessors. What was the question? You had a question on it? Ms. Sikler, please come up and use a microphone. Try again.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Eileen Sikler, Precinct Four. So, the assessors. Um... Could someone explain to me the major changes in the salary line as well as the contracted services? Thank you.
Is there someone from the assessors to answer that question?
Uh... Paul Tierney, Town Appraiser. Uh... So, for Fiscal Twenty-Three, um... There was a part-time clerk that we did not renew the position. A full-time data collector that he was not renewed for FY Twenty-Three. So, we decided to keep Mr. Dougherty on as a consultant, and we moved the numbers around from salary to expenses.
Go ahead. Follow-up.
Follow-up question. So, what portion, if I can just ask? So, the difference between the ninety-four and the one eighty-one of about ninety thousand dollars. Uh... Can you explain the major components?
So, we switched... Uh... We took out the salaries and then moved them over to the expenses part. Mr. Dougherty, I believe, was sixty-five thousand?
Sorry, sorry. And what else was there? Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Deed Support in Patriot Property Software.
With a data collector, is there any impact of not having that person?
No. Well, no, because we're gonna sub... We're gonna sub out the data collection to Patriot Properties.
Any further questions on the assessor's budget? Yes, is that Ms. Ellis? Come use the microphone.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Shari Ellis, Precinct Three. Following up on that question, um... I understood, I think, that the contract for the prior assessor, Mr. Dougherty, ends at the end of, um... Twenty-twenty-two. Um... And so, will that contract be continued? Or is that... That was a transition period? Is that all complete?
Paul Tierney, Town Appraiser. I believe, going forward, we would like to continue to use Mr. Dougherty's services for the foreseeable future.
Thank you. Further questions on this budget? Okay. Seeing none? Let's put this to a vote. Do you have a poll, Amy, ready? You have to vote each one. All right. Oh, you... Do you have a poll ready for the total? We can do a total. You got a... You got a total? All right. That's the total for the held ones. Is that correct? All right. Yes. Um... No. Let's... Let's do all the... Do all the held ones individually, please. Okay. A poll's on its way for those in the audience. All those in favor of a... An assessor's budget of four hundred sixty-two thousand, eight hundred thirty-seven dollars? All those opposed? Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Okay. Did you get that?
Yeah, forty in favor, four against.
There being a clear majority in favor, that article passes. Let's move on to the board of registrars. What was the question on that? Please, question? Ms. Ellis?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Shari Ellis, precinct three. I believe I just had the question on the increase in the contracted services and what caused that increase.
Ms. Warfield?
Yes, Shari, to you through the moderator. The biggest increase that that budget is being driven by is the printing and mailing costs. The two major things that come out of that contracted services are the mailing, printing and mailing of the census, which has to be annually done by law. And the second thing is the printing of all of the mailers that we have to send out because of automatic voter registration now. So anytime you go to the registry now, unless you specifically tell them not to register you to vote, they put you in, in the voter registration system again. We've had a number of people that know that they've got letters from us saying, "How come I'm now registered as my full entire name?" That's because you went to the registry, changed, updated your driver's license. We have to, again, by law, mail out every one of those mailers. So that's the thing that's been driving that cost.
Any further questions on this budget? Let me know when you have a poll, Amy. All right, poll's on its way. For those here in person. All those in favor of the board of registrar's budget of thirteen thousand, one hundred fifty dollars? Please raise your hand. Opposed? Thank you. There being a clear majority in favor, that budget passes. Planning budget. Who had a question on this one, please? Ms. Byer?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Kathy Byer, precinct two. I believe when you went through and spoke about the vote from Ways and Means, that it was almost split, did I hear a six to five?
Six in favor, five opposed, and one abstention.
And that's the biggest discrepancy I heard in any of the budgets, and I would just like to hear both sides of that. It looks like there's about roughly seventy thousand dollars, so it looks like this is in the full-time salary difference. And so I'd like to hear just from both sides of that. Thank you.
Mr. Moran, could you present both sides of that from Ways and Means for us, please?
Sure. Steve Moran, Chair, Ways and Means. It boils down to a new position request for a zoning compliance officer. The two sides were basically in the four category. A little description of what the zoning compliance officer is for. And so it's a new position that is specifically meant to do compliance from the perspective of after the plan has been adopted and approved and the implementation is being done and questions arise. It's not necessarily a full compliance, as in the building inspector in zoning, but it would work in conjunction with the building inspector. The people who were for it felt that this would free up a lot of time off Christian and Kristen and other people within the department to allow her to get things that she needed to get done, like the master plan, which has stalled, been stalled for a little while, and other planning activities. Those who were against it felt that the position was a position that was really meant to be in the, in the building inspector and that it was more of a compliance-type position than necessarily... It was, it's a compliance issue meant for being in the building inspector side.
Thank you, Mr. Moran. Ms. Kastner?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just thank you for that summary. I did spend quite a bit of time with the Ways and Means Committee, and I just wanted to clarify that if, we did have a backup, in your backup, two pages, about what's been going on in the planning department. So we did start with the idea of kind of zoning compliance officer. We heard loud and clear from Ways and Means, as well as working with the building department, we are not trying to create a second zoning compliance officer that would be in the building department. We're actually not even calling it a zoning compliance officer. We are proposing to add a new full-time position. We are proposing to call that position a development coordinator position. Not sure who to look at, the audience or this audience? A development coordinator position. This position is intended, as all of you know, the planning department does a lot of permitting, from beginning projects coming in, going through all the department review, going through the board, and then there's a lot of post-development. This position would be in that role with the permitting team, especially in that post-development oversight, which is admittedly a place where we could do a better job. We've, our department of four people, we've had four people in the department for quite a long time. We've added one position in the history of the planning department, and one position in 29 years. We are seeing, and I think as you guys have seen, and we started with looking at diversity of our commercial base, as mentioned. Today, sixty-three percent of our tax base is coming from the commercial side. We want to make sure that stays robust. Our buildings are full, people are coming to work. And part of all of the life science initiatives that we've done, a lot of the feasibility studies and planning studies that we've been doing but are having a lot of trouble doing because we just really don't have a lot of capacity in our department to plan, is affecting our ability to forecast into the future, come to this body to make some of those changes to ensure the fiscal stability of these buildings, filling the buildings, having new buildings, old buildings, or new buildings. We've done a great job. We're really busy in permitting, really, really, like... I've been here nineteen years, it'll be twenty years in December. You know, we've seen ups and downs, and we've been in a wave for a long time, and it's great, it's great news for Burlington. But we're just at a point where we're not, we're not able to fulfill the service needs of what's coming through our department, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kastner. Any further questions from the body? Mr. Murphy, online, please.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Moderator, Chris Murphy, precinct five. Chris, I'm just curious, like, all the towns that are around us, how many planning staff do they have? Are we around the same, or are we less? Are you looking to catch up, or do we have more people? I'm just, I have no context for this request to add another position.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I think I prefer the other microphone. Hear me? Yes, yes. The question, oh, surrounding communities. So it's varied, I don't have all the numbers right in front of me right now, but, I mean, you're looking at different communities around us, Lexington. I mean, whether or not it's the planning department, or the engineering department, or other departments, there's a lot of staff, and there's a lot of ability to plan, and there's... Bill Ricka's adding staff right now to their department. We're seeing, let's see, Woburn. We have about comparable staff to the communities around us. Bill Ricka, they have a kind of weird system of different departments do some planning as well, but they, as I mentioned, are adding staff. And I just will say that, you know, we have, what we hold in commercial base at about, what do you, six, seventeen million square feet of commercial base, and we have sixty-five percent of our tax revenue coming from that base, it's really something I think that we should be working hard and diligent to plan. We also, as housing prices continue to rise and a lot of tear downs, subdivisions that we never thought we'd see, we're seeing subdivisions, and we want to make sure that we're protecting our neighborhoods for all of you as well. So I know that wasn't a direct answer to the question, but it's hard to do kind of a one-to-one comparison, but I will say that we certainly do not have a lot more planning staff than the communities around us. So, thank you.
Mr. Murphy, any follow-up?
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, I don't want to argue with you, Kristen, but the towns you've mentioned also have tons of commercial tax base, Bill Ricka, Woburn. I kind of would like to know how many planning staff those, those towns have, because that would give me a sense for whether this is a necessary thing, I guess. I don't, I guess I wish you had more familiarity with some of the real numbers for those other towns, because they're pretty similar to us in terms of, you know, how busy they are and how much commercial property they have. So, I mean, I guess what I'm trying to avoid is we, we say yes to this, and now we have a staff of five, and we find out that other towns only have a couple of people. And then why do we need five, you know, kind of thing? So anyway, I'd I'd like to have that information, I think, before I'd be willing to support it, that's all. Thank you.
Ms. Larue?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm sorry that we don't have exact numbers for all the surrounding towns. Burlington does, is much busier than a lot of our neighbors. Our staff is comparable to many of the communities around us, but it's also much smaller than other communities, such as Waltham and Newton, that do more business like we do. But rather than compare us to other communities, I think what we really need to consider is how we can service Burlington best. And I can tell you right now that our staff, we have an excellent staff, but they are overworked, and they have a lot of night meetings to go to, and they're getting burned out, and we're gonna lose them if we continue at this pace, it's not sustainable. We need an extra person in order to not only handle the incoming work that comes to us and all of the things we have to process, but also because we need to do planning. One of the best things that our staff has done in the last few years is prepare Burlington for, for the bio lab space, and we're getting a lot of that in, and that's really saved us from what's happening in the regular office category. If we hadn't planned for that five, six years ago, whenever that was, we'd really be hurting right now. But what's next? What's the next thing that we have to plan for? I don't actually know the answer to that, that's something our staff should be working on, but they're just trying to keep their heads above water right now. This is a critical person for our department, but it's a critical person for Burlington. So I'd ask that you support this, thank you.
Mr. Murphy, your hand is still up, anything further?
No, sorry about that.
You're mute, Monty.
You didn't call on me, mister, mister, speak, moderator. Are you trying to speak to me?
Mr. Pearson, can you hear me now?
I can. My name is Monty Pearson. I'm in precinct three, and I have been on the land use committee for the last ten years. And I can assure you that the volume of activity that the planning department has to manage has gone steadily higher during that ten years. And you need to look no farther than this warrant to see how busy we are. You look at the back end of this warrant, and you will see that there are seven zoning issues that are all relatively complicated that are on that, and that there are also two or three other zoning issues that had to be postponed because they were complicated, and we just did not have the capability of the land use committee, or the planning board, and the staff to manage the questions that came up with that. And there are a lot of important questions about the shape of the development of town over the next few years, in terms of how the commercial districts are set up and other things like that, and how they're going to be supported. You know, that there are, you know, some workshops about how you're going to be having development along the mall road. All of that stuff requires some staff backup and some staff looking at other things that are going on. This extra staff person is, you know, is really needed. Seven, seven things, seven articles for zoning is an awful lot for one meeting, and this is not, this is not a one-time blip. This is a continuing process of more stuff coming in. We have a lot more activity than Bill Ricka does. And I know also that the planning department in Woburn is considerably larger. I don't know exactly, but I have been to meetings in Woburn, and I know that the planning department in Woburn is larger than the planning department in Burlington. So we are not overstaffed with lots of people sitting around, you know, shooting fly squatters. We have actually a lot of need for people to be doing planning stuff here. And it would be very short-sighted of us to not add this position.
Mr. Cooper?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It occurred to me that we have another town meeting coming up, and I'd like to make a motion that what we do is we simply ask somebody, whether it's Ways and Means, to do a quick poll of the surrounding towns and get his actual facts. Because I went to the Woburn site, and the Woburn site shows two staff. Now, they may have other people that... That's what the website says. If you let me finish, Monty, I will continue. That doesn't mean there aren't other support staff that don't show. That's only what it shows on the website. So I would like to make a motion that we just tabled this one item, get some additional info, and be able to address Mr. Murphy's question. I would need a second, however. And thank you. And thank you.
Mr. Cooper, could you repeat that, please?
Absolutely. I'd like to make a motion to table this particular item to the next town meeting, and ask the Ways and Means Committee to get us facts of the surrounding town and their staffing levels for their, for their appropriate departments, so that we can answer this question that Mr. Murphy raised.
Is it to remove the new position? Until the next meeting? Which is effectively to remove the position for right now, until the next meeting? Is he talking about Wednesday night, or the next town meeting?
Uh, Wednesday.
Oh, so postpone the vote on the planning office until then, or just this position?
The planning, the planning. It can't take the position out, it wouldn't be the budget.
Right. So postpone the planning office until the continued date of town meeting?
Okay.
It's, I don't know if that's what he meant, we should clarify that.
All right. Um, I believe this is the motion you were looking for, Mr. Cooper, and, and you can correct me if it's not. But it's been moved and seconded, that we postpone any action on the Planning Department budget until Wednesday night. Is that correct, Mr. Cooper?
Yes, in order to give Ways and Means the time to get information on other town staffing.
Okay, that's been moved and seconded, discussion. Questions on the motion as presented? Ms. Ellis.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Shari Ellis, Precinct 3. Does the Ways and Means have time before Wednesday to do that? And would they also then find out what those communities do for the planning, um, in, in their communities? Because if you're going to compare the staff, you also need to compare the workload. Thank you.
Mr. Moran.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, I would argue that, um, the Ways and Means Committee does not have enough time to do a thorough analysis between now and Wednesday evening's meeting. Um, in order to do this properly, we would need to identify the specific towns around us that are comparable to Burlington, um, compare what types of industries that they have, whether they have a, the same quality or in quantity of, of life sciences. Also, we would need to get in-depth with the Planning Departments and the people who are doing the Planning Department work, whether they're in the Planning Department or not, and understand what the specifics of the jobs that they have are, and how they divvy them up, and what they're doing. Um, I would argue that, uh, the best course of action here is to, uh, listen to, uh, the description that Kristen and the Planning Department have given, and, and decide whether this town really needs the additional planning, uh, resource or not. Um, there's a lot of, uh, things that are on the Planning Department's plate, and it, I don't think it necessarily is relevant how much, uh, a particular town has with planning, because all the needs are, are very different. Um, what we're really deciding here is it, is this new position right for, right for Burlington? And I think, I would recommend that if we really wanted to get that particular information, um, you would allot a lot more time for us to do that. Thank you.
Mr. DiTucci.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Dan DiTucci, Precinct 6. Uh, through you, I have a question for Kristen, uh, Planning Director. Kristen, are we going to be losing a couple of positions, uh, in the future? As far as a Assistant Planner, or something of that nature? Or have we already lost a position?
Ms. Castner, please.
Thanks. Uh, we have just recently lost our Assistant Planner, um, as of April 12th. Um, and I do see that we may have additional changes within the department. So, um, you know, there's something to be said for having people in the department, having institutional knowledge. I really want to try to retain, um, what I can in the department. Um, but, yeah, I, we have lost a, a position. I don't want to lose another position. And I will say, um, I know a lot of you sit on committees and boards in this town, and we try to do as much as we possibly can to try to help different boards. We obviously land use, zoning by law review, um, but also housing partnership, and transportation, and, you know, we want to do as much as we can as a staff people to be on boards, but we're seeing ourselves, I mean, between the staff I have, I mean, we're having, other than Friday night, we have a meeting almost every night. Um, so, I just, anyway, and, and to the point of comparing with other towns, I mean, the planning, planning activities cross between engineering, planning, and economic development. So, you can look through those different, um, different communities, how they're set up. I mean, a community like Newton has twenty people listed in their Planning Department. Um, you know, it just, I would agree that is planning something that we in Burlington want to value and invest in to make sure that we're doing the things that we want to, reaching our goals for the future, and that's really what I'd ask. But, yes, we have seen recent changes in the department.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. One more question, please, to Kristen.
Go ahead, Mr. DiTucci.
Um, is there a possibility that, see, I don't know why, but I just thought that this position should be handled on its own. Um, and I always thought that when we create new positions, uh, sometimes town meeting, um, will vote on whether or not we want the position. Can this new position work in? Because you do, guys all work collaboratively. Do we need to hire that position that we're going to be, that we lost on April 12th, which is the Assistant Planner? Excuse me, right. Can this position here encompass some of the responsibilities of that person? So, that means we're not going to be hiring two people rather than just one person?
Job description. We are speaking to the amendment at this point.
Um, so the question there, um, we in the Planning Department, we're all in the field all at the same time. What needs to get done, gets done. Um, what doesn't get done, we have, permitting has timelines. Planning is long-range. Planning often gets left on the side. Um, the position, the Assistant Planner position is, is a full position. It's, um, we proposed this position when we still had the Assistant Planner position, and we were already all hands on deck, and there were things we weren't able to accomplish. So, um, and the Assistant Planner position, and the Senior Planner position, and the, um, the Administrative Assistant, and myself do all of the work. I mean, whatever needs to be done, we do. So, in terms of wrapping it in, we're, um, it, it's something that's happening right now. And what we're trying to explain is that there are things that some of us are doing too much of permitting, and not doing enough planning, such as myself, um, and the Senior Planner, and the Assistant Planner is already doing that, um, the roles that we have identified within this new position. So, thank you.
Just a comment, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. DiTucci.
On this position, the reason why there's so much controversy going on with the town meeting members is because the Ways and Means had the opportunity to really look for this position, ask a lot of questions on this position. Uh, whereas, right now, we're just reacting to the decisions of the Ways and Means. Um, I have a, I just don't know myself of how important this position is right now. Uh, again, because I'm just wondering if we're going to be coming back, and I'm not sure when, for the Assistant Planner's position. And then, you know, I know there's a lot going on in the town, but we may actually have six total people within the Planning Department.
We'll go through your chairman there, Mr. Moran.
Um, the, the Assistant Planning position, which we had the resignation in, is a standing position and can be refilled without the, the vote of town meeting mem- without the vote of town meeting. It's just this new position that, uh, requires town meeting to authorize.
So, um, excuse me again, Mr. Moderator. Are we voting on the total Planning Board budget with this being included?
That's correct.
As opposed to just voting on this separately?
Correct. Right now, we're focused on the, on the motion on the floor, but once the motion is voted, we'll go back and vote the department.
I'm sorry, you know, I, I support all these town offices, but, um, it's going to be difficult for me to support this position for the fact that it's already built inside, uh, the planning budget. So, if we don't vote to support the planning budget because of this one position, then we can't fund the Planning, uh, Department. And that just bothers me, that's all. Thank you, that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Okay, we're getting a little far afield. The motion that is in front of us is whether we wish to postpone the discussion on, further discussion on this budget until Wednesday, or do we want to continue the discussion tonight and vote on it? So, let's please keep your comments to those, to that, uh, amendment, please. Ms. Warren, you have your hand up on WebEx.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is Chris Warren, Precinct 4. Um, whether we vote on this tonight, or it is postponed to another night of this town meeting, I am in favor of this, um, of this additional, um, position. And I think somewhat to go to what, um, Mr. Murphy said. I, on page one hundred and four of our budget packet, the main one, um, it shows compared to Lexington, Bedford, Wilmington, Bill Ricka, and Woburn, Burlington is much more dependent upon commercial revenue than any of those towns by far. Um, with the other, the closest being Wilmington and Woburn, which are still fifteen percent behind us. So, uh, I think that as long as we are, as, as, as long as we are as dependent as we are on our commercial base, I think we do need to have this position. And I think that Clint, you know, keeping up with permits, um, and long-range planning, uh, both are things that need to be done, because there's so much activity. Thank you.
Warren, now, that was a wonderful explanation of why we should keep the position. Now, the question before us, though, is, do we wish to postpone until Wednesday? So, please, any further discussion, let's focus on that. Mr. Sinessi. No, we're not moving the question yet. There's too much debate going on. Sorry, Adam. Myrna, Ms. Saltman.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Myrna Saltman, Precinct 2. Point of information, how many town meeting members are sitting here in the hall tonight? And how many are home? We never got to count.
Myrna, does that have anything to do with what we're discussing right now?
Because we're going to be voting, and, and, you know...
Myrna, does that have anything to do with what we're voting on right now?
Yes, I need to know the number.
Please, thank you. Ms. Willard.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Sally Willard, Precinct 4. Um, I, I think that we have long relied on Ways and Means, and although I don't always agree with, uh, with their decisions, we have long relied on their, um, on their decisions and their inter, uh, uh, their questioning of departments that come forward with new, um, new staff item, uh, requests. So, I think that in this case, Ways and Means voted, were you unanimous?
Excuse me, Ms. Willard.
Nope, I'm in favor of this, of, uh, I'm not in favor of this motion before us.
Thank you. Any more discussion on what's before us? Mr. Sacks.
Uh, John Sacks, Precinct 7. Uh, Ways and Means already indicated that Wednesday wouldn't give them enough time to do a good study. So, it's pointless to put this off to Wednesday. If you give me a little bit of rope, I just want to point out that in the Treasurer's report, it was shown that Burlington is the envy of every other town in Massachusetts, because we have so much commercial, uh, real estate revenue. And that's where the heavy lifting of planning goes. So, I would like us to say no to this, and then yes to the main vote.
Here we go, your, your rope was about running out. Further questions on this? Ms. Byer? You've spoken once, I'll give you another chance.
Kathy Byer, Precinct 2. Uh, yes, you can give me a chance to apologize. I just wanted to hear about the split, and not to reopen all of this. So, I am not in favor of postponing until Wednesday. I do think that Ways and Means went into the weeds on this already. And so, I am ready to vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cormier.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, John Cormier, Precinct 6. Um, if I could, I'd like to hear from the person who, who actually made the amendment, who seems to have his hand up. Uh, Mr. Cooper?
I was going to get to him, but I'll...
Thank you.
But to someone else in line before him, thank you. Ms. Nash, do you wish to vote on this tonight?
I wish to vote on this tonight, and I think that the presentation we have gotten so far indicates that whatever the ratio is of our staff to other towns, the accomplishments which they have are formidable. But we all know, and other committees have recommended, that we need more done, such as a traffic coordinator, something that might be part of this kind of individuals. I don't think we're going to learn any more between now and Wednesday, but I think what we know already suggests that we should move the question, vote them this, and I think we might see our town be all the better for that wise investment. Thank you.
Mr. Cooper, on WebEx.
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Uh, I have to say that this was my first night back in town meeting after almost twenty years. Um, I am a little surprised, because as many of you know, I was Chairman of the Ways and Means for five years, and served on that committee almost twenty. I would have thought we would have at least had to answer questions about the size of surrounding towns. I'm not questioning the fact that we have a lot of work in town, but it's nice to have points of reference. And a point of reference was given tonight, where we would compare to Newton. And the words were that there were twenty people in the planning board, in the planning staff in Newton. They also have eighty-nine thousand people living in the town. So, you know, you have to be careful with numbers, and I simply wanted more facts. And that's why I made my motion. I just wanted to have a better feel for it coming back in. So, um, I hope you will vote. I will see if I can gather the info myself between now and Wednesday, and just at least have a few additional details. Thank you.
We pretty well beat this to death. Any further questions? Okay, all those in favor of what's been proposed? To, to postpone until Wednesday? All those opposed? There is a clear majority of... There is a clear majority opposed, the motion fails. That brings us back to discussion on the planning department budget. Are there further questions on it? Mr. Martin.
Mr. Moderator, Scott Martin, Precinct Seven. I, I just would like to address Mr. Reed's concern. We are comparing ourselves to Newton, which has 80 some odd thousand people. During the day, Burlington has 125,000 or so. I think we are comparing ourselves, if, if Newton has 20 people in their planning department, we ought to have 21. So going from four to five, or six, or whatever the number is, I can't even remember now, is kind of ridiculous. So let's vote for this. I'm in favor of the budget, the extra person. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Mr. Pearson, you have your hand up. Do you have anything more to say that you haven't said already?
A question.
If you put your hand down, we'll call for a vote. Okay. Now we are going to vote on planning budget of $444,226,000. All those in favor? There being a clear majority in favor, the planning budget passes. Let's move on to the fire department. Who had a question on this? Mr. Boyven. Do you think we can handle this one a little more quickly?
Hello, this is Bill Boyven, Precinct One. My question is this, I'm looking at the staffing, the police department has a staff of 84, the fire department only 74, and yet the overtime request for the fire department has virtually doubled that of the police department, and I'm wondering if I could get an explanation, please.
Chief, I guess that's your question.
Oh, thank you. I can only answer that just based on, on the fire department and what we've, the cost for our overtime over the past several years, and, I mean, we're asking, I think, in this budget for an extra $50,000 to our overtime account. We feel that that will bring us up to where we need to be moving forward for the next fiscal year.
Follow up, Mr. Boyven.
Thank you.
Why don't you stay up here until you're done?
Yes, thank you. Well, I guess that my question is, what kinds of things justify overtime for the fire department? And, and I, I would like to know how it's different from the police department, but you can only answer for your own department, as you said.
Chief Patterson.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So, I mean, our overtime costs are basically driven on vacancies within the department. The other thing that, that's big is the number of people we have out injured on any given period of time. So right now, you know, we have seven firefighters that are out injured, so that accounts for the cost of overtime. We have 13, we have minimum manning, meaning 13 personnel per shift, which is three fire offices and 10 firefighters that we must maintain 365 days a year. So that's pretty much where our overtime costs originate from.
Thank you, Chief.
Any further questions on the fire department budget? Seeing none, I guess we'll put this to a vote. Do we have a poll ready, Amy? Okay. All those in favor? There being a clear majority in favor, the fire department budget as presented passes. Trash removal. Who had a question on this? Mr. Cormier. Bring the microphone up to him, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Cormier, Precinct Six. I believe I have the right line item. My apologies if I don't. I brought this up year after year after year, so I hear from my neighbors, my constituents in my precinct, they continuously, year after year, are frustrated over the yard waste removal. And every week, we see yard waste being, sitting on the side of, of the streets for well over a week, if not two weeks. And every year, I keep on asking, this has been at least the fourth year where I keep asking, and it doesn't seem like anything is being resolved with this. And I'd like a, an answer as far as what, you know, what, what is going to get done? Because, as I said, I'm, I'm tired of hearing from my neighbors, and I'm just passing that frustration along.
Thank you, Mr. Cormier. Is Mr. Sanchez here?
Yes.
Sanchez, if you could handle that for me, please.
I, I hope so, Mr. Moderator. So to Mr. Cormier's question regarding the four-year issue with yard waste, which I don't believe is four years, although we do have issues with yard waste, the last couple of years was particularly bad when it comes to yard waste. I mean, our office has been inundated with phone calls about how bad it has been. I mean, some of us who actually came to work every day in the offices and actually did work, realized that there is a lack of people actually doing work. City drivers, laborers, workers. In fact, we have issues hiring even some help for our departments. And that has been a significant issue when it comes to our vendor, which is Republic. However, this past year, after probably the worst yard waste collection season that we ever had, so we took action against that Republic. We issued liquidated damages against them for the lack of service that we received. They have significantly improved this spring, and I hope you have noticed that. They have new staff, new trucks. We have continuously met with them through the winter to ensure that they're going to have a better season coming up this year. But further, we do have one year left in the contract. As we go out to bid this fall, we're going to be addressing not just that issue, we have other issues when it comes to collection, whether it's bulk waste, yard waste, et cetera. We've been lucky, though, for those of you who probably have seen the news or read the papers, we actually had trash collection going on while all the communities, actually, we're not even getting trash picked up. So communities very close to us had that issue going on just five miles up the road north, where even the trash was not getting picked up. So we're lucky that it was just waste. I mean, obviously, we shouldn't be bothered, I'm already even in a pandemic, it's going on, but at least it was yard waste. Throughout the state, we, we see that issue going on right now. But, I mean, we're going to be addressing it through a new contract for the year after FY '23. So I hope that answered the question. There's no excuses being made because there's not much more that we could have done for this year.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Any further questions on this article? I keep losing my screen with the participants list, so I can't see if anyone's got their hand up. Nobody does in that case. All those in favor of a trash removal budget of $2,322,124? All those in favor? There being a clear majority that this budget passes. Brings us to the last-held budget negotiated settlements. Who had a question? Mr. Boyven.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bill Boyven, Precinct One. My question is just regarding the dramatic increase from last year. It's the highest negotiated settlement in four years, and it's $750,000 above last year. I'd just like to hear what that's about. Thank you.
Mr. Sagorino, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, Bill. Negotiated settlements is, I can't believe someone's asking about only a 621% increase, but it's a little bit of a mathematical issue in that we, as of the end of this fiscal year, we have no contract settlements with any of our employee unions. So as you look at the budgets, they do not include any wage adjustments for next year. We pack all those funds within the negotiated settlements amount, and it's included within the town guidelines, so it's part of the 3.5% that we had to meet. As we settle contracts with our collective bargaining groups, there's no additional tax dollars requested. The money comes out of this account, gets transferred into individual budgets, and as a result of that, mathematically, that amount goes down in negotiated settlements while the department budget goes up. And every year, we deal with this funny percentage on that because we're actually taking money out as we settle the contracts.
Seeing no hands up either place. All those in favor of a negotiated settlements budget of $872,715? There's being an obvious majority in favor, negotiated settlements is passed. And that, my friends and neighbors, finishes the operating budget. So I guess we can, I guess we can have government this coming year. Okay, Article Four has been withdrawn. Article Five has been withdrawn. Okay, Article Six has been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee to see if the town will vote to authorize revolving funds for certain departments under the town Burlington's general bylaws, and the rest of the article is as presented in the warrant. Questions on this article? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Eileen Sikler, Precinct Four. Last year, this balance, or at least as of 3/30/21, was half the amount, it was about 700,000. And I think there was a mention last year that there were going to be some charges in September or January that was going to offset some of this, but I don't see any charges against that. So in any event, the amount has doubled. Can someone explain to me the, the nature of that?
Mr. Donizio.
Is it? Is it not? Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Could you, which account are we talking about?
Oh, sorry, ambulance.
Ambulance receipts reserve?
Yes, yes, yeah, yes.
So, can everybody hear me? This one working? Okay. Sorry about that. So ambulance receipts reserved account was set up a few years back, and that's where we are able to capture the revenues we get for ALS services now that we provide ALS services. So we expected to be coming back to talk about transferring some money to help offset the additional costs within the operating budget, or other training, or supplies, or eventually maybe even buying an ambulance. We just haven't, we haven't done that yet. So we're still collecting the data to, to see what the annualized cost of adding the service has been. We have a pretty good idea now what the revenue is going to be, since we've got a pretty, you know, 14 months or so of revenues, but we're still working on the cost.
Thank you, thank you, John. Question for you, Mr. Donizio. There's no revolving fund list for, on the list for the, for the ambulance. Is there supposed to be some there, or some-
No, it, it's not part of this article and stuff.
Good. Thank you. Further questions on revolving funds? Seeing none, we'll put this to a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? There being a clear majority in favor, Article Six passes. Article Seven is a long list of capital budget items. We are going to approach this the same way we did with the operating budget. I'll go through them one at a time, reading the, the amount, the relevant votes of committees, and if you wish to discuss further, please say hold. Okay. Article 7-01, DPW Chestnut Hill Cemetery Fence, $20,000. Is that a hold? 7-02, DPW Stream Cleaning, $200,000. Ways and Means supported this 13-00. Capital Budget supported this 6-0. And the Select Board voted 6, excuse me, 5-0-0 in favor of it. And the Select Board voted 6, excuse me, 5-0-0 in favor of it. DPW Grand View Ave Pump Station Design, $130,000. DPW Vehicle Replacement, $593,000. Ways and Means voted 13-00. Capital Budget voted 5-1, excuse me, in favor. Select Board voted 5-0-0 in favor. Fire Phase 2 Communication Plan, $700,000. Ways and Means vote 14-00. Capital Budget vote 6-0. Select Board vote 5-0-0. Fire and Police Records Management and Dispatch, $439,500. Ways and Means voted 14-00. Capital Budget supported this 6-0. Police Network Security Updates, $63,219. Ways and Means supported this 14-00. Capital Budget voted 6-0 and Select Board voted 5-0. The Police Department Body Cameras, $222,870. Ways and Means vote 14-00. Capital Budget voted 5-1 in favor and Select Board vote was unanimous 5-0. Economic Development Transportation Study for Through 3A, $35,000. Ways and Means vote 13-00. Capital Budget vote 6-0. Select Board 5-0. Recreation Department Pickup Truck with Plow, $50,000. Ways and Means voted 13-0-0 in favor. Capital Budget voted 1 in favor, 4 opposed, and 1 abstention. The Recreation Commission voted unanimously in favor of this. For Recreation Department, Simons Park Basketball Court Renovation, $230,000. Ways and Means supported this 13-00. Capital Budget vote was 5-0-1. And Recreation Commission vote supported this unanimously. The School Department, Francis Wyman Playground, $290,000. Ways and Means voted 13-00. Capital Budget voted 5-0-1. Select Board, oh, excuse me, School Committee voted 5-0 in favor. The School Department, Computer Science for All Curriculum, $150,000. Ways and Means voted 13-00. Capital Budget vote was 3-3. School Department voted 5-0 in favor. For the School Department, HVAC Controller Upgrade, $108,000. Ways and Means voted 13-00 in favor of it. Capital Budget voted 0 in favor, 6 opposed. School Department voted 5-0 in favor. Pine Glen Bathroom Repairs, $65,000. Ways and Means vote 13-00. Capital Budget voted 1 in favor, 5 opposed. School Committee supported 5-0-0. The School Department, Pine Glen HVAC, $500,000. Ways and Means voted 13-00. Capital Budget voted 0 in favor, 6 opposed. School Committee voted 5-0 in favor. That's been held. Burlington Sports Field Master Plan, $70,000. Ways and Means voted 13-00 in favor. Capital Budget voted 1 in favor, 5 opposed. School Department voted 5-0 in favor. School Department, Music Floor Reconstruction, $450,000. Ways and Means voted 11 in favor, 1 opposed. Capital Budget voted 0 in favor, 6 opposed. School Committee voted 5-0 in favor. For the School Department, Fox Hill Portables Repairs, $160,000. Ways and Means supported this 12-00. Capital Budget supported this 5-1. School Department voted 5-0 in favor. For the School Department, Scoreboards for Sports Fields, $110,000. Ways and Means voted 12-0-0 in favor. Capital Budget voted 1 in favor, 5 opposed. School Department supported this 5-0. For the School Department, Activity Bus and Utility Vehicles, $145,000. Ways and Means supported this 12-00. Capital Budget voted against, voted 2 in favor, 4 opposed. School Department voted 5-0 in favor. Bleachers for the Marshals, Marshall Simons Middle School Field, $220,000. Ways and Means supported this 12-00. Capital Budget voted 1 in favor, 5 opposed. School Department supported this 5-0. That's held. For the School Department, Visitor Control Access System, $25,000. Ways and Means supported this 12-00. Capital Budget voted 3 in favor, 2 opposed, 1 abstention. School Department voted 5-0 in favor. That, that budget was held. Does that answer your question, Shifan?
Four, I wanted to request a hold on 7/17, 7/18, and 7/21.
All right, that gets us to Article 7. Now, we didn't cross too many off the list, I'm afraid. Okay, for the seven items that were not held. You've had your chance to hold them. Okay, good. I've only given you so many bites at the apple here. Okay, the ones that were not held are 7-02, 7-04, 05, 07, 08, 09, and 19. Oh, and 13, yes. Do we agree with those? Okay, so the total budget for those is $2,124,089. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor? There being a clear majority in favor, those items are passed. So let's go back to the held items. DPW Chestnut Hill Cemetery Fence. Who had a question?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Eileen Sickler, Precinct 4. In the Town Other Special Purpose Funds, there's about a half a million dollars for sale of cemetery lots. And I know last year, Mr. Sanchez said that that money will be used when construction is needed, so I was wondering if we could use that money for this project.
Mr. Sanchez.
Yes, Ms. Mo, can you hear me? So the short answer is yes. The meeting can decide to use funds for improvements on the cemetery. However, we've been holding those funds for the next update and upgrade to the cemetery. We have a new columbarium that we're going to be coming in here soon and possibly a new expansion. And typically, we have used those funds for those major items as opposed to very small items as a fence. So that's where we're trying to keep those funds for.
Mr. Moderator, can I make a resolution or, sorry, a change to this?
Yes, you can make a change to it.
Okay, so I have it here, that I moved to fund the fence repair of the Chestnut Hill Cemetery from the sale of cemetery lots from the Town Other Special Purpose Funds.
She can't do that. She can't do that?
They have a proposal, this is a free cash article, so she'd have to, she can't change the source of funding.
I know.
I don't think she can change the source. She would have to say this is no. She'd have to vote this down and they'd have to come back in with another motion because this is from free cash.
And it goes to all of them.
Correct. Because she'd have to vote this down and they'd have to come back in.
Okay, Ms. Sickler, I have been, had a clarification from Town Council that this is part of an article of numerous articles, excuse me, of numerous items that are all being funded by free cash. So you can't change the source of funding for just one piece of that. If you wish to change the source of funding, you will have to vote this down and have the town come back with another article with a different source of funding.
I think I get it. All right, thank you.
Okay, all those in favor of $20,000 for the DPW Chestnut Hill Cemetery Fence? There being a clear majority in favor, this article passes. The next held one. DPW Grand View Ave Pump Station Design, $130,000. Who had a question on this? Mr. Boyven.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bill Boyven, Precinct 1. This, Warren article here mentions 14 deficiencies that were discovered 10 years ago, and yet this is saying it's just going into design phase. What did it take 10 years to get to even beginning to design a repair? And then another section says it's a continuation, which, but it also is listed as a new project. So it's a little confusing as to what the sequence of events is here.
Mr. Hayes, please.
Mr. Moderator. Tom Hayes, Town Engineer. So we've been working on pump stations since probably, I don't know, 2014. We had a townwide evaluation done in 2012, and then over the course of probably the first few years out of our operating budget, we took care of deficiencies in the various pump stations. So if you look at the capital plan for the last few years, we've done Lucaia, Francis Wyman, Douglas is on the, is on our capital plan. So this year, the design for the Grand View is up. So as part of this town meeting, you'll see design for Grand View and funding the construction of Partridge. So over the course of the year, we go through, work for the big, the big money items now. You know, these stations are all 50-plus years old. We've really kept them together with, with glue and duct tape for the last 50 years. So it's time. You know, we've, we've used our operating budget. We're at the point that these stations are the big, the big money ticket items. So that's where we are now. So if you look at a 10-year plan, you'll see every year, you'll see a design as well as construction happening for the next, I think, four or five years. And then will be all 14 stations will be brought up to code, and we won't have to touch them for another 50 years, hopefully.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Anything further on this item? Seeing no hands raised in this place, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Opposed? There being a clear majority in favor of this article, it passes. The next held item. Fire and police records management and dispatch, $439,500. Who had a question on this one? Mr. Round.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jim Round, Precinct Six. Is this system going to be connected to the town financial munis system?
So the system as it's designed does have the capability to do that. However, as far as what we're going to do in terms of connection, we haven't decided that yet. That would be a discussion with the town before that were to be rolled out.
I just want to bring forth a note of caution. I've got 24-plus years dealing with munis. And nothing's cheap and nothing's easy with this system. If you're going to have some software, try to communicate with it, please make sure that the vendor absorbs all the costs and responsibility for getting the two systems to communicate with each other. And that it doesn't turn on and blow up in our faces here and that they're not compatible.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Round. Anything further? Ms. Sickler.
Eileen Sickler, Precinct Four. This may be part of that question, but I believe the vendor is pro-Phoenix. And so my, and looking at that website, it talks about a scheduling management module that tracks overtime, vacation time, staffing requirements. Will we be using that?
So yes, that system is separate from munis, which Jim was just speaking about. That would be an internal system that we can keep our accruals based on collective bargaining agreements, how much vacation time and sick time is used, et cetera. We can keep internal records of that. They would be separate even for police and fire. It would not be on the town's system.
So we'll be using that module for that?
Yes, my plan would be to use it. I don't know that we'd roll it out initially, get used to the main part of the system and then roll that out as a component down the road.
Are we transitioning from another application to use this module for that activity?
Yes, we would. What will happen is if this is approved by town meeting and the money is there in July, it'll take about three to four months for this new company to data mine all the data into the new system and then we'd go live at that point.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything further? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Again, a clear majority in favor of this article, and it passes. The next held item. Recreation pickup truck and plow for $50,000. Who had a question? Ms. Willard?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just wondering, the Capitol Budget Committee, I believe, voted one in favor and the rest against. Can I, I'd just like to know why.
Well, why don't we then ask for the committee votes for both Ways and Means and Capitol Budget on this item if there's a question on them? Mr. Morin, please, first. And then we'll get to Mr. Sinessi.
Ways and Means voted unanimously in support of this, 13-0.
Mr. Sinessi.
Capitol Budget also voted 6-0 in favor. I believe that this was confused with a different vehicle replacement plan for another department.
Okay. Any further questions on this? Seeing none in either place? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Again, a clear majority in favor of this article passes. Recreation Department, Simons Park baseball court renovation, $230,000. Ways and Means supported 13-0. I have 5-0-1 for Capitol Budget. Is that correct, Mr. Sinessi? Thank you. Who had a question on it? Yes, Betsy.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Betsy Hughes, Precinct Seven. I just have a question. Every year, we vote to accept money from the Simons Trust. And I'm just wondering why we couldn't use that money, which is for the maintenance of Simons Park, to help fix this basketball court, which I agree needs to be fixed, but I just want to know why we can't use that money.
Mr. Egan.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Brendan Egan, Director of Parks and Recreation. This year, the funds from the Simons Trust, as we'll see later, are going to a fully accessible treehouse that will be built behind the Visco Building at Simons Park. They'll be taking the funds from this year and they reallocated last year's funds. So basically, we're putting the projects from last year on hold for two years. And they're using those two funding, those two years of funds, along with a private donation of $100,000 to build a fully accessible treehouse.
Thank you, Mr. Egan. Any follow-up? Any further questions? I see none. Put it to a vote, then. All in favor? Opposed? Again, 38, four and four against remotely. A clear majority in favor. This motion passes. Brings us to seven dash 14. HVAC controller upgrade, $108,000. Ways and Means vote 13-0. Capitol Budget vote 0-6. Maybe I didn't like seven 12. All right, sorry. Seven 12. I'll try this again. Francis Wyman Playground, $290,000. Ways and Means vote 13-0. Capitol Budget 5-0-1. Who had a question on it? Mr. Sinessi.
I just want to correct the record. On Capitol Budget, it was one in favor, five against.
Sorry, it looks like I copied it from the one above.
Yeah, so I was the sole vote in favor of this and I did that out of recognition that I've been to that park before. This information came really late in the process. It's a $290,000 ask. And we received it with, we actually heard about it for the first time, spoken at a school committee meeting. After the warrant was sent out, we really didn't feel like we had the full amount of time to evaluate. I would have, under different circumstances, I would have asked the members to tour the park on their own time before taking a vote and we would have delayed the vote. But really, the late nature of the process this year was a determining factor that I think, for the cost that they were asking, transpose next to the backup that was provided, it just wasn't enough to justify for several of our members.
Thank you, Mr. Sinessi. Anything further on this? Yes, Ms. Hughes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I have a number of questions about this one. One is, I don't think there's any, there has been no rationale as to why this is needed, why now, what alternatives were reviewed. I also took a field trip to the park today and actually talked to some of the folks who were using it, including some of the teachers and some of the students. There was nothing broken. Everybody was using it. It's not the fanciest in around and the one that's certainly in the package is much snazzier than that. But given the fact that we have hotel receipts down and unsure how things are going to happen, I think these kind of expenses, which are not required, nobody's in danger because of it, at least from my observations today and in talking to the folks there who said that there was no danger there. I'm just wondering why we're being asked to do this now. And I'm also, would like to request that maybe in the future, there'd be some more thorough documentation for the town meeting members on these kinds of things like the other departments have provided to us. Thank you.
Dr. Conti.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Before Mr. Kuna gets into some of the specifics, I just wanted to say that the, all the projects here fall underneath the dollar amount that the town has provided the schools to work with. So the, again, this project would fall underneath that dollar amount. We did not use the town's capital forms. We are not against using the town's capital forms. We had just not done that. And again, if, through the moderator, if through Ways and Means, they would like us to use those forms, we're more than happy to use those forms. So it wasn't, we didn't purposely not do that. We had just never had done it. So we will, from now on, use the town forms in that moving forward. Mr. Kuna will tell you now about some of the playground equipment that was actually used when it came to Francis Wyman. And we're trying to keep all of our parks as accessible as possible and as equitable as possible. So we want to talk about some specifics and the parent group that's been working on this for a year.
Again, I will apologize through the chair for not providing the documentation, dealing with some of the vendors. Definitely was delayed and that's not an excuse. That's definitely on me providing that material to you all. What you don't see in the document and what you don't see at the current playground today is the work that we've done over the past few years to maintain that. We've had to go in and regrade the hill working with the rec department. We've had to go in and take away a dangerous slide that was in the side of the hill. Our maintenance department, along with the recreation department, has had to go in, clear out some damaged equipment, maintain damaged equipment, go in and re-sand and replace wooden structures that are full of splinters. And as Dr. Conti mentioned, the equipment that is there now originally came from Simons Park and is more than 20 years old. So again, while you may say that it's fine and sure, could it stay? It's definitely not up to the standards that we want and it's smaller than what it used to be. So we're really not providing the playground that we'd like to for our students. Yeah, so we do have a committee. It's mostly 90% parents. There's only three staff members on it. So we're really trying to stay out of any decision-making at all. This committee has been meeting with rec department members. Again, as a committee, meeting with vendors. So we've gone through various designs and then it's been brought to me to then look at some of the details. So what you're seeing is representation of what the vendors put together through the committee's decisions, not by the school department, so.
Thank you, Mr. Kuna. Any follow-up questions? Mr. Pearson, online.
I took my, I took my hand down, Mr. Chair, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Van Camp.
Hi, Dave Van Camp, Precinct Seven. I'm a little confused by this one. I want to vote for it. Benefits people in my precinct. My kids have played at that playground. But maybe I'm missing something. You're asking for $290,000 and I'm looking at quotes that amount to 183,600? What's with the discrepancy? That's a pretty big discrepancy.
Mr. Kuna.
Through the chair, so, thank you. $183,000 is from one vendor, just for materials only. On the second page of that, you'll see that there is another 83,000 and then a second number of 90,000 for installation and labor charges. There's, on the third page, maybe the fourth page, I'm sorry, there's a quote from a single vendor to do the whole entire project for 350,000. That's providing materials and labor. Obviously, we would go with the one that's cheaper, which is that 290,000 that was presented or at least requested for the warrant.
Okay, well, then to Ms. Hughes' point, we need better backup. I stared at this for half an hour trying to figure this out. Pledge of old photocopies for the answer. It's not clear. We need better information. We can't make good decisions here as a body if we don't get good information in. So I would echo her request. In the future, please, please, help us out here. We want to help you, but we can't do it if we don't have good information. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Van Camp. Yes, Ms. Hughes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just a couple of follow-up questions. One is, what would be the consequence of delaying this for a year until we can figure out a little bit more about what's going on with the recovery from the pandemic and the occupancies of the different buildings and the hotels, et cetera? And also, what other playgrounds do you have in mind that are going to need this in the future? And do you have a plan so that we can, you know, know what's coming at us and when it's going to be coming so that this can be happening, these renovations can happen in a strategic way and we can be planful as we go through it? Thank you.
Mr. Kuna.
Thank you. I think the biggest issue with delaying it that we're going to see is that the cost for materials and labor is just going to go up. I don't think we're going to get a better playground in a year from now. I think the need is definitely still going to be there. It's just going to cost us more money for the same. As far as the plan, no. I don't have an actual plan that says that this playground will need to be replaced or that other playgrounds need to be replaced. As I said, this playground is more than 20 years old and was built in two phases. And we've done maintenance, again, with the rec department to make sure that we can keep these in great shape. Memorial, you know, has a newer playground. High School has newer playgrounds for the early childhood. Pine Glen's Playground is relatively new, so all within the past, you know, 15 or so years. And we do look at those on a continuous basis with the rec department to make sure that we're maintaining them. So when we see that they're really kind of deteriorating or we're having to take away some equipment, that's when we'll really look to address it.
Mr. Duttucci.
Daniel Duttucci, Precinct Six. Through you, Mr. Moderator. Well, now, when you say that this playground is 20 years old, we also heard that some of the equipment came from Marshall Simons? No. So this is all, this was built brand-new 20 years ago, this park?
Simons Park. The equipment was removed and donated from Simons Park and moved to Francis Wyman.
Right, so how old was the, what I'm getting at is how old was the equipment when it was at Simons Park? Because it appears to me that it's possible, I'm in favor of it. It appears to me that the equipment or the playground was built on used equipment. Right, so when you say it's 20 years old, that to me means 20 years ago, it was brand-new equipment, the whole park. Is that true or false?
It is false. The equipment is more than 20 years- The equipment is more than twenty years old.
Right, so you have to be more specific, okay? There's no reason why we shouldn't support this. Thank you very much.
Anything further? Lay it at the back. I can't see that far. Need to sit closer.
Thank you. Sorry, hi, Nikki Cadillac from Precinct Six. Just a brief question through the moderator. As far as, you had mentioned that there is a committee involved, including a lot of parents. Is there input still possible for design decisions? I was just, again, I echo my colleagues with the backup. It would have been very helpful to have a little bit more information as I was looking through this ahead of time. I'm just wondering about accessibility. I see one of the quotes has bark mulch and another one has poured rubber. I'm not sure which of those quotes we're going to go with. So I just wanted to sort of clarify whether or not there will be more input from the planning committee, whether or not this goes through.
Mr. Kuna.
I would have to get confirmation from the committee themselves. I believe this is the decision and the design that they have landed on. That being said, since we will obviously have to, if the money is approved tonight, meet with the vendors again to make sure that our design is the final one and place that order. So I do believe that there is time for some last-minute decisions, but I don't know that the committee is actually scheduling or looking to make any drastic changes to what's presented.
Anything further? Oh, Mr. Sinessi.
Adam Sinessi, Precinct One. Mr. Kuna, I just want to clarify, because I have taken a look at this playground before, but it's not fresh in my mind. Can you just remind, is there a rubberized surface so it is wheelchair accessible at this point?
Mr. Kuna.
Thank you. So there, where the swings are, there is a plastic border that does have a poured surface there. The rest of the playground is bark mulch and grass. And then on the upper area, there's a section of pavers, and then there is a hard-compacted dirt and rock area for a walkway. There's no large port in place, and mostly it's grass and...
And the plan would be to add to the rubberized surface thing so it is more accessible for people with wheelchairs? Is that part of the plan?
The plan is definitely to make it accessible, but we're not looking to, there's a larger area. So there's an upper and lower tier to the current layout at Francis Wyman. We are not looking to pave a majority of that, so we're looking to maintain a similar size as far as any poured surfaces and go with like a mostly bark mulch-type area, and then any compacted areas in the upper section as well, but not looking to increase the amount of port in place.
I'm just trying to make the point that part of the improvement plan for the playground would, I believe, based on the last time I was there, I don't think it was, it's not the most up-to-date when it comes to accessibility compared to our other school playgrounds. And I'm trying to help you guys make that point.
Seeing nothing further? Why don't we put this one to a vote? All those in favor? Opposed? I'm going to need a couple of people to help me here with the count. Mr. Sinessi. All right, gentlemen, if you could split it in two. All those in favor, please, raise your hand. Okay, all those opposed? There being seventy in favor and twenty-five opposed. This article passes. Seventy in favor, twenty-five opposed. I hear a motion to adjourn. It's not debatable. All those in favor? Opposed? We'll see you seven o'clock. Remember, change in time. Wednesday.